...with the, uh, uh, ACVO as it was called, um, distinction in between us and between the county services and insurance that they call it. Uh, there was a request, uh, they come through the, uh, ACCF for assistance. And, um, saying that this would probably come through somehow, um, with SBS for assistance. I, I asked the board for a branch, and I want to admit, um, with how you want staff to, to deal with, uh, organizations and also self-credit, um, because there is a complication services. There is a great deal on we do not give the services. And, uh, I just wanted to get some introduction for stuff. Okay. Um, I didn't want to start with any comments or anything, but I can check the way I was. Um, I want to leave off this discussion by saying, look, all friends in this room, almost may have different ideas on the good things, but, uh, all this respect to service and our veterans work. One, one day I'll have more satisfaction than any, but all this respect to service and our veterans always said, some of our failing members are more active in the past and more active today now. So, uh, I'm gonna do some situations where I wish as much as possible. And like I said, many reasons that should create this for this board to, uh, to look at our veterans services or how we're doing operation or, uh, or the job we want to try to facilitate during the best operations for veterans. We got to put, uh, uh, to say there's a little bit of good service after. And I tried to start off with a point of, um, uh, for my business, but anyway, I don't know. We are hard to hate victims, yes, why are we not spared? However, with that being said, most confusion being caused by the only man of these organizations that I've ever asked to work to consider asking him a change. And the way you brought up with some sales, as you're misleading, misguided, and misinterpreted, he knows very simple to, your animals and their homes are clearly the ones that are worse for you. Right, that's what I'm trying to say. Now, I have to be honest, I still start with nature of stimulus. But I detect that for Shalabots, Shalabots is the town of Os County, Mexico Service Office. That's the name you have been meaning. It's a remarkable story, as a great looking organization, so this, this side, I'm clear about your claims. Um, necessary to attend to all the meetings of his ACT, rather more kind of last meeting, cooperation. And, um, I've already attended one, and I was maybe doing, which has been a good idea. Uh, and everything, if one of our staff, she says she talked to them. And, listen, I've passed the other one that victims never know who, but turn it on, and I'll help you. Yes, when I say that, honestly, you speak in, tonight you speak in. So that's fine, okay, so that's good, she said now, she, she's actually the same as you. But I was gonna get to know my sons, but yes, no, but if you're gonna say you're not even working. And I must say, you're not as impossible. For that reason, I'm very proud to talk. Uh, you're actually very sorry I'm not going to hear, so I'm gonna try, I was actually asked that since I did not need to hear about the ask this call line again, but so I'm actually thinking my staff's kind of their question. Now, uh, we will stand now, having all trained us to have a nice situation to solve it. A cloud of days to have all powers, and it's, uh, so this time is how the Texas Service Office. You have never had to go into trainers and train. Or have you turned up the force they're not able to, and it's just, you have this guy's papers. I speak to all about their services, they're not a hero. Or have you been wanting to say of the day until, being of those, and, and all, try to, unless you have been able to say that I have to go to the trainers and train, or I should be able to help you. Right. In the credits. This series ought to be made about, uh, this could be five separate, uh, matter people. Exactly how we're not doing it. If those factless and source town will save their work in the season, they'll see their benefits. The victims given us all percent warning. After the animal CVA so far declared its victims behalf, after using all methods, the victims were walking at one hundred percent forward and toward. Uh, don't you know basically, from being told by the mayor, you have all the progress CVA so done, and three dollars to have a damage all percent warning. And because of this, your benefits go over your number, you have all percent warning. And this basically would keep it where I know where you know. But that told me this authority to us here, is that is, well, you don't, if an act of what the code of law to have, could it be of help, then come upon for talk, okay, yeah. In the credits. Yes, excuse me, Mr. Shangels, for clarification for the audience, everybody here on Zoom board knows what is going to explain your benefits. Their benefits is a pure of our victims can be asked for a service of all requirements like a calendar, process of the claims, like a fair claims. We can look at all the claims without closely validating our way of acting, but we can say what our claimers need for your process. It's actually one thing that we answer, and we could answer that your benefits. Right, unless you're hoping for your benefits, the victims have another your benefits to come, person. Uh, maybe next year I'll be showing the animal care on the call expansion. And this is a big one, we have a ship, we're working, call call and try, try. To say it's there, let me state how to do this. And this is a similar one that the organization tries to all possess, yes, yes, quotation. This is clearly a level, or a bit of a, is six, or five dollar, or justice, that says the person on this court, or what before to pay with trial samples, officially said that, what was there of in a classy, reckless issues. A good sense for that, meaning the judge has a sense of safe importance. And he needs like a point of his disabled status, as if it were a quiche, war bags of milk, he likes to disturb. And he prefers that the victims are all possessed, but he approaches the person in a manner that seeks to overcome authority and services provided by town's office, which is authorized by major reckless code. And in a circumstance where you can say that, what you call. Right, right, if you have a copy, let's go on a, 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 a culture like that. And, uh, that's a claim for what the true value, what the what the actual value can work on. Uh. It's a, it's something we have to have a careful action, and I, I accept that. And then I know it started with a, a, a pure of my business, the organization goes to, to pass it back. Uh, you know, right, and I mean, this is that you may try to, guys. What's your top days? Uh, this is how you live, thank you, sir, today. I did the second meeting of the victims treatment court. As the county resolution, to call me out, and victim treatment, service provider, national jury. You didn't require a resolution at the meeting. All the resolution established the victims' service meeting, and it's a equal service provider. Although I don't answer questions since we are not classic, though you know, it's a new way. And the VTC. Right, well, you certainly miss statements in your false and theories on a stone that I didn't insert to serve me, to hold you, to claim me, to ask me to be there, so it's just clearly that's not the force there, because now the act of VTC is the false air that the and the reason for the victim. That's merely, and no, that's to be done, except for fair to perfect. Right, so, a, so this issue is the equal service provider. And I think the doctor essentially can't crack a fee for that. Uh, there's only one thing, uh, the analysis of this VTC is in the engagement stage, and favorite. I can only, I'm not mistaken, so the points to totally, but this paper, I'll stay on the exactly how I look back on this before, so I'm sure you can plug that back if you're lost. Uh, however, the clear basis is, uh, you see, I get those down, and I'm starting to, hey, it's saying that it's gonna be my last session, and if you have one, just hold it up in the walk, or quit, and I'm like, so I started talking about this to you, so you just gave it, now it's not the VTC battle, so look at, my word. So, when I say that I'm sorry, I will expect the battle. Right, just yet to score on three hundred battles, scoring as expected battle. Right, I'm gonna try to call on three hundred, right? Uh, twenty pounds. And I know it's a VTC. Unless the Department of Victims Affairs is going to try to, like, ACVO is, or the Medical or Personal Office. That means that victims are not located where they ever need to try in a theory, medical setup, to meet them. Relation is that ACVO, the Department of Victims, tries to say what, but open, that point, that, and, 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 uh. I just don't see it from what goes to the, the veterans control room. Also too loud, the veterans control room where you don't have to catch good methods. I'm sorry, but I'm sure I could get a little pork, so I could go to, and I don't want to, and I don't want to go, but the person is there, he's not gonna face, must have been stupid, because I contacted the total page. Can we, is that your policy? Well, I can't see how we have cleared now. I asked for the title, yet back, so this does. Which is so that the big man can sue me on the pay, but I feel that the section will clear. I want to be clear, that the last Department of Victims Affairs does that, or the whole truck, with ACVO, in the store. However, so that he has, that says, is still the call truck. Right, you have got a name, and, uh, because this one I've got a claim. Right, so it's his stage, which now is standard, so he continues to say that. Uh, to the bridge, uh, this next to the whole, you know, this website. Uh, then next bottle, uh, uh, price, Bible's price, and I don't like it, so price the victims, or contact the ethical division, uh, uh, clarify that, so, right, and I still attack the UCA's website, website, this is the last thing I've got, some sign of your account. This is a case of the obvious, obvious, and hope to look for, for your starts, or no, no, official, I don't know website, and so that I might have nice to talk about, uh, click the Google, and I, and I'll call out the country. Now, the tax to keep, I don't know, we're gonna create some name, if the case, I started on a website, the patch, and I license the country, they should be helped to fix, and then they should be able to. And then next the nation says, that's the trust, just work, have a language. Uh, we're not the main, hey, period, I talked, uh, K-Charles, with the old highs and soup corn, or don't let me know the history of the, of the, of the, how you are gonna turn it around. Now, there again, and this website has put in less information, and it's corrupt, but, yeah, uh, this little girl, she has the obvious, and I will say the hope, look one. And the last, credits, is a girl in this website. It's a very durable, animal care, slash, victims statistics. And it tells you, start it, based with maybe the days that the whole that period told you a hundred percent, you know. Uh, it talks about comparison for the new of two thousand twelve. And that comes back, it, it can last seven days, if we all sleep on the wall, around twenty-five, and then on seventeen. And they say, oh, the officials say, buddy, you're not a mid-train, can't work for seven days, and it just takes a bit, uh, 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 but it doesn't say, uh, there's nothing to say. However, all the data to tell you, victims' services provided, you realize, no, no, for him. Uh, sixty-seven, see, that is from two thousand twelve. We understand that sixty-seven is only six months. Right, you, you're better than any of you, I can remember. I just understand that sixty-seven, I don't think, probably, not that good. He's trying to learn, and that could be anything, if it, if it were questioned, and give it to something for battle, but does not count for me, and I was counting for you. If that comes as a safe, talk to, the case that, or if that's a case that, we hope this is our counter, our counter. As we turn, we can't scale it, but she would be more losing, and the audience could understand what you're calling, anyways, and what you're having as a claim, kind of, there, kind of, that's a service, so, or that could tell you this, there, claim, or you are showing the evidence, for your claim, and if you have your claim, try to find victims, or a call, and what makes all the borders, without, that, that, that comes, where it's at. Uh, now, I say twenty-one, five, twenty-six. And at the same time, the victims, now, I have this to my cats, a child, uh, uh, the claim for the six hundred six, but if that getting sick on you, and if the four hundred six comes back, and I try to, very likely, six hundred six, and I try to. Right, the point of ours is that, the whole song, claims, that are done, are carried, to declare, don't worry, big, significant, very, very good for the category of social services, the problem. And I get to know him in a week, or in the eye of the torch, as a local tour, because I've shown the claim about it. And I, uh, my child is a local tour, and I understand I stated the same policies for you too. Yes, I have got a question, uh, what this season was a heart, made to get me a little bit better. We don't use data, capable fourth, two thousand thirteen, from Department of Digital Affairs, and it tells to which of sources it's true. It's from, uh, Mr. Peter, public secretary. And it states, uh, uh, on, on annualized basis, this allows the one to earn seventy-eight thousand dollars and change, in the benefit payments to victims. In addition, you see, the S O P, around five thousand dollars and change, one type of fitness, or you only get four, usually, uh, July first, two thousand one, two thousand twenty, two thousand twelve. Um, these numbers seem hard. These numbers are real, you're close to, yeah, I've seen them once, well, exactly added to what I said, uh, these numbers are real, and these numbers are a clock. Yeah, this is a strong, important, that's a serious, very, very, inside, that's a true thing. And that's not the point of that, you know, so the people that boxes, they are still in place, that position, like the one that's why I asked, to the victims in this county. Yeah, I'd say the benefit coming for a position, right, that's, all right, everyone wants, okay, thank you. Uh, the law to confuse, uh, which, which was, I don't understand, but Mr. Shangels had to start to ask me, if you're a full portion in the end, man. Who could you explain the reason? And hopefully, the fiction, or it's again, the difference between processing, the difference between legal on behalf of, uh, for the legal representation, as you pursue to your claims process, if victims complete something, if they found their claim, or your benefits themselves, you are truly, uncharted by organization, grocery shopping, found their claims, through the county, uh, county, county service office. As I was saying, of course, the justice, I also want to benefit of the, the victim in a flat, selling the claim, which I left at that time to the average, usual representative. Just because of the ordinary benefits, does not mean, that victims have rights, or trying to work to have representatives. Right, it's over there, I can only say twice, if victims have representatives. And the claim comes back, and I guess, of course, I'm not so, I'm not so processing, and obviously, so, and, and if you have, you know, and I said, if you're like, and I'm cute, right, and I'm a big kid. If they have a power to, you know, you, that, that you have a bad time, it's over there. It's quite close now, why is it safe? But it's for the county service, it's for the service office, I think, but, but, uh, you know, I'm not sure of the claims, and I'm not, I'm not sure of the claims, uh, I thought the government of victims, the federal, F W, and that's, they have, at the field, what the offices, you know, where, and they say to the victim. That's more appealing, question, that's, right. All right, well, the one, uh, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna, I don't know, I stole from you, I just, I told you, and I wish. And now, what's going on? It's not appointment, to have what we have, so, so, or actually, appointment, or anybody else, and this series appear. And this appear, that apparently, has lots of, and it's. And I have a meeting, and I want to show how, how, and I'll expand, you know, like, maybe, more of a customer, and I know what happens, as you sound like, maybe, for some of our control, or this theater. As they appear, overall, true, if you're, if you're, if you're, because, that's their opinion, or could be weird, you know, because of, you know, that, that the plan that's the ones is that, and this may appear, and that's how they, they don't want, you know, the website, which, I don't know, I was, but it's for, I have a good chance. Right, it was done, maybe, as I know, as I know, just one, uh, 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 the, the, the website, and I put on a, 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 I do, I need to, uh, should we get some people, uh, the course is specifically, we move this up to the first line, so I won't watch a whole lot, or I'm not going to watch people right now, until we, uh, get some comments from people, if there is a time change, you know, for, they talk to you, you speak, because they're a citizen, he's all right, to help, or help, or, uh, Mr. Trevor, is he busy, or he's busy, because it was often stained, or his initial presentation, with the health of Mr. Warren Barkley. And it was often stained, is second, whatever, just, just to keep things in context. A little from Mr. Paul, you know, under a forty-one, that, that, to leave the meeting, to go walk on, or whatever, so, the, 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 we need to keep things in context. One, one, uh, what is one, that, that, which is YouTube, X, and, and, I just, I know anything else. Uh, I, firstly, want to ask for your help, I think, was in two thousand one, when Mr. Fenwick was in office, I got a zero percent warning, on the fact that I had a list of symptoms, of, you know, in, in weeks. You know, so I tried to give myself, you know, with the US, what I have, your benefits, and failed as well. Um, this last one, again, back in two thousand eleven, um, I had a diagnosis, if you think, with my old mates. Um, Mr. Moford, they helped me to, um, revise a supporting statement. And then I asked, um, given the call, Congressman Tom Quinto, for assistance, as well, in that claim. And I did get it, all hundred percent waiting, but, almost the same, which help, the ones of the diagnosis I got, that got me a hundred percent waiting. You know, that's the, the, one common thing to see, that he's, was the only reason why I got it. Was my God, it was because of the diagnosis I have. The, the, he's, was the only reason why I got it. Was my God, it was because of the diagnosis I have, of our state. Evidence was still put back in the, the, was all difference back when I first initiated, that the end of our even, came to look at that, even off the old, old, the evidence that I was seeing, by the doctors. Nothing that we put in there, I never saw Mr. Wolf from the back door, of what they seen or anything like that. So he cannot say, fly for it, that, that was sent out, was what was, was I'm saying, or the back door. I was actually in a hurry to wait, before I even went, Mr. Wolf, as if he had given an actual mission back door, of the dates of when they gave it to you, and, um, percentages. And, that's what I have to, um, say for the message that, um, he sent out. It's, it can happen for twenty years. Uh, till you, uh, kind of, some services came to me, and said, you know, you had been some previous discussions, over the line, this issue, uh, and asked us, like, you know, about these discussions, and I should, I should, I should, I don't like the history, to be up to class here, so I'm not going to tell us, I should, uh, because, I, I think, it's harder than that, and it's true, and I'm all connected, but, then if I were to, uh, I love a certain, so I should, I should, I should, uh, Mr. Mount, I guess, I could put out, a person, I could put out, the town, I have a place to go. Uh, now, uh, uh, this, 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 uh, 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 this, uh, uh, that, that, uh, 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 I was, I was, uh, uh, close to, uh, uh, I guess, the partnership. You know, why are there's not many hours, that's a lot, uh, that I've been, Mr. Wolf, uh, we, we want to go back. Then, uh, she belongs to Paul Begovic, which they travel the board, the American Legion of National Security, and to contract for services. Uh, at that time, the cell phone, our military, cause of, uh, when I searched, uh, public party, public ships, with, uh, non-직, public, there's a corporation in the state of California, watching issues, and, and clearing public ships, with municipalities. Uh, uh, I decided to, uh, so I look at this, uh, 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 and, uh, and, uh, the contract was, uh, correct, and, uh, and it's passed, and, uh, 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 the plan of our, with the program, some services, of the, of the, the plan of our , with the American Legion, is to help veterans. I was very sick and low, and I should, I could construct a, 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 so I may, may run, I could, I could, like, the best. And so, I was mentioning, I don't care, I don't know, the, uh, my, 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 uh, so, I'll say, uh, the, the organizations, and the services, you know, well. You know, I don't want to say this, colleagues, I think, with victims, uh, I don't think you know, uh, without the show, I push it, uh, uh, it's about the salary, I don't have a, uh, 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 that, 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 that's, uh, the, 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 uh, that's true, again, our cultural differences were substantial. I think, uh, the market got, I had, on a host count, we had, uh, 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 so, you know, so, you know, the claim, uh, I had to, uh, 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 I didn't ask, but I asked, uh, it's all on his claims. I have a high point in the, in the, uh, I've got a high point, I don't know, I should pack a little bit more. If you have everything, uh, 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 that one, service official.
I want to talk to the other speakers. Sorry, what happened here? What? Thank you. Hello, how can I help you? My name is, um, David Concham, we have a, uh, medical nurse doctor, and I am a, uh, Vietnam veteran combat sixty-nine seventy. I belong to the military, which is one of my. I do have, um, claims against the VA, and I am now going to leave, uh, for, um, uh, for my, uh, hospital. Uh, image. What I'd like to start sharing today, this morning, is the importance of veterans, or the importance of a veteran. Don't need to be a true veteran. It's easy. When there's claims here, you need a single point contact. So that a veteran can go there and he knows where to go. Uh, it's not like a grocery store, you have multiple grocery stores, you just can't walk into a grocery store. You need a single point contact. And that single point contact has to be of importance, it has to be up ahead. Right of VA. It has to be all. It has to be a place to go to get something done. If you have another satellite system out there, the satellite system fails. Not only is that failed, but the veterans failed, if the claimant is held permanent. Oh, I'm just okay with this voting, to let you know, as a veteran, I will go in one place, and one place only. And I will be to one VA officer. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time, uh, trying to decide on, uh, yes, please. Thank you, sir. This is, uh, Mr. David, we're seeing it, a VA officer, talking like a American, different social issue, you know, some other side to the, to the, to a veteran, I would, I would tell, the office. Okay, thank you, don't believe me, I do have issues. I'm not trying to go there. Is me, uh, thanks, I'm sorry, I love you all, uh, one question for you, sir. Yes, sir, have you ever heard of anybody complaining about a veteran's service office being so terrible, that they should? Or have you heard of anybody complaining about someone dying, or about charity? Thank you, sir. Okay, okay, thank you, gentlemen. I don't know, I'll call it, shh. Don't, I'm sorry, sir. About seeing one, I got a decision, I know, but I can't, I can't, I can't. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time, I'm sorry. I must start, uh, I do have time, can you pull up? Yeah, you just stand by, I'll pull up, I will, I will, thank you, I will. I don't know. Thank you, very good, very good. Okay, let's start with our service contracts. Uh, we should state your name, but you work on change, this, uh, next case, I'm also from California, so I'm. Um, to restart, uh, the, uh, satellites, um, last week, we, uh, come in, they were, with claims, we found, that's been correct, the same, what a veteran service issue, sir, correct, so, uh. Um, uh, Mr. David, you will come in and act, it's, uh, hip and hipped, I'm sure, while I'm actually trying to make a comment, so I can always, to do some sort of work. Um. Then it's, uh, negative, some, uh, medical community called, uh, vision, uh, I've never seen that email, so I can't recover that either. That was quite my fault. But, I received a letter saying that meeting there was not invited to, to tell the, uh, as a show, that if future meetings, we won't be attending, and invited to. Um, this would have had an essential response, uh, to tell, uh, to see, supervisor, the VA, still supporting, uh, the patient, uh, those spots of focus. Um, let's add on Thursday of this month, of this week, Thursday, that, uh, by any kebab, and it doesn't go through, our veterans' treatment court may be established in a, uh, term of living. And that the court may be releasing to all the combat surgeons, our program, which would provide, our first veterans' treatment for six months. So, the medical cause of veterans' treatment court will be established at a term of business, uh, classification according to Duncan McRicker, at the California Veterans League Task Force. Uh, I heard a lot of, maybe, yes, sir, it could happen, so. It was not Nikki, it was your client, I'm expecting a rule of notification, if I wanted to, a kind of definition, I would question to. Um. It does not become a first treatment case, or is it established, uh, basically, that is court. There are four treatment cases of, two voluntary and one probationary treatment service for veterans, called custody order. Uh, the probationer was awarded, uh, probation also against June, two ten, their treatment plan was approved by legal probation authority. They are two voluntary dues, and their services are provided at no cost, we provide thirty days housing, and onsite services with doctor, doctors, medical doctor, overseeing it. Um, uh, Callap, with cancer, this can raise, he's also the top target program, cancer for American, he's also a veteran. Uh, we have a cure, cancer, Ted Boish, who terrorists in California, he's a, he's a suicide angle, after PTSD, and large number of fighting, and we do it, uh, uh, the, uh, what is, of treatment services, to let the, to veterans, and veterans, if she's, to let them. Any questions on that? Does it answer questions, sir? It's a distinction between a treatment service, uh, court. Yes, sir, and it may be first, court order, for veterans' treatment court. And, uh, when the court arrives, what the charges? The end of the court case, the probation based, uh, one year to probation, because it already been, the laws already been established by the court, the courts issued the ruling, it is the sentence to thirty-seven, so it's a term of thirty-eight treatment program of one, two, or four. We went to the probation board, with the veterans, veterans came to us, we submitted all program, probation, close the program, and a lot of the entry into our program. Do you answer questions, sir? Um, I, I guess I'm just trying to, trying to couple that with what Mr. says, because I'm a lawyer, that, uh, the law, Mr. Linux talked about the body, I guess we don't have body, to, uh, destruction, because away, this, uh, is a term of calendar. So, if, like, in San Diego County, we have twenty veterans, who try to, to, to use that number, for all veterans' treatment, as a, for PC one seventy point nine, eleven seventy point nine, a term of two years. So, they do a special calendar, on a monthly basis, one month, two quarters comes in, there's the booking, and there's the court, they gather all the information, they give us that information, need to determine which veterans, who can go to this form, a term of six, program, of a term of court. So, they're doing, uh, a program, literally after San Diego, was found in North County, the judge have spoken with him, in his office, about how he started here, to set us all, the forms and documents, and the processes, procedures, the rules, um. Forms needed, intake, charge one, the hits, he'll say, we have it all, and we'll make it, for animal county. Specific, uh, so that's a question, sir. They need, any kind of, uh, anything from, uh, federal administration, or anything else to make this happen? The veterans' administration, has its good, the veterans' justice, our work program, and that's coordination, the veterans' medical. It's a matter of making this happen. The veterans administration uses what they call the Veterans Justice Alwits Program, and that's coordination of veterans' medical service, Rachel, and this is twenty one. The program wants to apply that to all later, they're the main threat of the service, diverse line for angle, so the American county has to, we don't have to. That's the official number you're assigned to, if you can, uh, whatever supervisor she goes to, you tell her if it was operational clear, which is assigned to apply that to. Pay that to later both of Texas Alwits Program, a quarter with the veterans and veteran treatment and the Alwits Program. Alwits Program coordination, we have spoken to her, Ziki, and, uh, San Pablo, San Pablo is a coordinator. We're going to be building a relationship with, um, the contract that we're speaking about, American, the authority to have a soft justice defendant. And they have a alternative written on contract, the contract would be the coordination of market services under the Justice Alwits Program. So it's under the market supervision and Justice Alwits Program is the one that we work. So that's we established with our twin program, we do contract with the, the very value addition of veterans, which is unfortunately depleted. So having a better open, if, um, veteran can sit down, coordinate the work even, the Justice Alwits Program later, which will have the the treatment there, the detailed details on such a baseball disorders, and if things are widely been to conceal until we go on. We don't know how the contract from what, uh, to do to actually take veterans' health care, just as a view of veterans' service. So, but now we're fee based on, so veterans can come to us with this private medical care, try to get to FDA, or fee based on solid medical card. Doctor Malik and then she have patient right now. In the future, once the contract is formal, we will be able to take a veteran with alternative medical care of fee based on solid from directly to us, tracking with the real medical record. And directly bill each visit, not the veterans' service card, with the visit, and it's a, it's a statute, um, simple. So, okay, is there any special questions? Okay, um, one more. Hey, we are as veteran service provider, we're the only state of California to proper to services certified in all types of veteran service agency. And it's also including what I could argue, um, it's California, yeah, military veterans' code, nine nine point five zero, twenty nine nine point five one. Listen, I assume this is a, uh, package of this, um, and our attachments. Number one, a letter from Bruce and five years to August eighth, two thousand thirteen, I'll be there soon. That's the call for another one. The new one, August eighth, August seventh, August seventh, August eighth. I have your phone. I bet he's all connected after these meetings, he may just show up and get a few more. Any questions? How do I? Any special questions? Yes, thank you. Okay, so, it makes us a small public insurance agency in California certified insurance provider in the state where the laws and the decision on the second issue since two thousand four, when it was twenty two, three years past in the war, the previous organization was Victory Village, as in the US. We have called Victory Village and become Victory Village, that was a D B A, who have already changed our name as such. The operating side is counting to eliminate all further confusion on the usage of Amelie County Veterans Organization or the acronym ACVO. That will, we already resolved the state of California Secretary of State, the corporate ID name is going to result as Victory Village, I will be the CEO of the organization as well. The CEO of Amelie County Veterans Organization. So the questions regarding the name of the organization or or substitutions in all parts of the service agency, sir, don't worry. Does that mean eventually going to be a name completely the name of Amelie County Veterans Organization, really? Go to or Victory Village, yes, yes, I'm going to, I hope it will. It'll be a Victory Village, an actual location of the county's location, so if a device can't work, Victory Village can, Victory Village will work. One year just wait that opening, it's a necessity in the California Secretary of State of California. Like, dog, and you, and you're, uh, some person of, uh, in the USA. Is it said to say that the, that the states in there are now collecting, and usually watching the own service agencies out there, or sort of that, but this one happens to be, why does it have to be one change? Uh, that is one of the situations, it is that the purpose, the purpose is to contact the state, city, local governments, and the small business organization, which are business owners. As far as compliance with the nation's national requirements, it is so hard to do, to show that in terms of services of the county. There is, uh, there is the language you know, to encourage the counties to work with us. And I don't, I believe there's one which will match requirements with county plans, medical services, if if they, they will be squaring against all legal means to to pick of any kind of small business, business owners, business owners, or your section, basically. I assume the senior of the organization for veterans in this county, which is certified business of veterans, business owners, it's a different label. We're gonna be doing calls for our goodness county to try to attract more veterans, that goes for both organizations in the US. They're both certified in the state of California, and it's not perfectly consumer service, and not really a disabled veteran business owner, any questions to that? But the last season may be working best of the experience, but those are, uh, wait, this, the language is, uh, is, uh, thoughtful. I have other questions for us, uh, on the telephone. Yes, um,